We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This commission is Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campway, Tammy LaCaster. Hereby identified that a special call meeting of the Palatka City Commission is called to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission at City Hall 201 North Second Street in the city of Palatka on Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, to begin at five P.M., or as soon as possible thereafter. The purpose of the meeting is to consider the following items: adopt resolution of improvement once per week garbage collection; adopt resolution authorizing use of red light camera funds to offset cost of computer replacement; to adopt a resolution authorizing acceptance of USDA grant in the appropriate amount of three eighty-eight to offset cost of North Third Street sanitary sewer replacement; to adopt recommendations made at the four-thirty audit committee meeting. Please govern yourselves accordingly. We've already had our invocation and pledge. Let the record reflect that all members of the commission are here for our four-thirty roll call. We'll move on to item one, which is our public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone wishing to speak on items on the agenda for public comment, please fill out the yellow speaker's card in the back of the room so that we'll have your information for the record. Seeing no one here for public comment, we'll close public comment. You're here on the item, you're on agenda item, right, Jones? Moving forward to our consent agenda, we've got three items on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to reconsider the agenda as it is.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. The second, is there any further discussion?
I would like this thing, I'd like to help. If one of us got it, we'll take them.
That's not on consent agenda.
It's not?
If there are any other items on the consent agenda. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries now, let's leave moving on to that item. So anyone wishing to speak on the once-per-week trash collection, which is the only other item we have on here, go ahead and get a speaker's card, fill it out, put your name on it. You have three minutes when you come up. Give Mr. Hendrix two cards in case he messes up.
You want me to read it?
Go ahead, resolution.
Resolution of the city of Palatka, Florida, concurring with the city manager's recommendation to amend the city of Palatka residential garbage collection policy to collect and dispose of residential garbage once per week per customer.
I'll subdue for conversation purposes only.
There's a motion on the floor. The second, we're now open the floor for public hearing. The floor is open for public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, fill out one of these yellow cards for me. As you approach, bring the card up for me. Give your name and address when you come up to the podium so that we'll have your, we'll have it for the record. First up, Will Jones. I'll give you a warning in thirty seconds so you know your time is about to be up so that you can close.
Yes, sir, thank you, Honorable Mayor. Will Jones, one thousand five hundred T.A. Wood Drive here in Palatka, Florida, Commissioner, Mayor, City Manager. I just wanted to have a comment in reference to the once-a-week garbage collection. For over forty years, I've been in Palatka, I know that garbage has been picked up twice a week. My comment is about raising the fees for service and cutting services. And going from twice a week to once a week, I think we'll have sanitation problems in a lot of areas. I went out during the last couple of weeks of this ninety-day period, and I did just canvassing areas, taking pictures of trash that's overflowing in yards and communities, and that's just visible, not knowing what's behind gates and backyards because the trash compacts don't have capacity to hold the trash. I think we're gonna have a smelly city with doing, going to once-a-week garbage collection and a trashy city. Because on the pictures I had, if I had you guys' number, I would text you the pictures. You can see where the garbage cans are overflowing. I know that Mr. Griffin said that you could purchase another trash can, but that's another cost that's gonna be associated to his garbage collection once a week. And I think it's more, more on the taxpayers, giving them a higher fee and then less service. So that's my three minutes, and that's all I want to say about it, just for y'all's consideration. Think about what we doing, less for more. Thanks.
Just for point of clarification, the, you see your time went up, your other bill went up. So just for clarification, the second trash can is a no additional cost, correct? Is there additional cost to it now?
It's a one-time fee upfront, but you pay no additional service cost for the entire time you hold that can.
So during the, so during the trial period, it was no cost?
It was five dollars a month. It would've been sixty dollars upfront, but we spread it out over a twelve-month period. What we found out during that time is most people didn't need the second can. They called in a state of worry. We did have, we delivered fifteen cans, Mr. Chairman, we delivered fifteen cans at seventy-eight days in.
Okay, since my time, here's enough. I just want, also a little bit of my investigation. I called from surrounding counties. I called Greenco, Ocala, the cities of Greenco, Ocala, San Augustine, and even Gainesville, which the populations were like sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand plus, three hundred, in San Augustine, the city that's getting services. And some of them are once-a-week collection. However, the population is sixteen thousand compared to almost ten thousand in Palatka.
Almost eleven.
Almost eleven, alright. But what I'm saying is also the fee, the cost, was the same, basically, nineteen dollars just for the garbage part of it. And I just think that, you know, if it wasn't broke, what are we doing? And I don't think the cost saving is gonna outweigh the satisfaction of the customers that we serve in the city, okay? Because you don't wanna see trash overflowing in trash cans and on the streets.
That's all I want to say. Thank you. Two minutes and thirty seconds. Let me get your card. Pass your card to Mr. Andrews. Give your name and address, all right?
Good evening, everyone, I'm Kenneth Andrew Senior. I live at four zero one South Fourteenth Street in Palatka. Main thing is, tend to this garbage, like you said. I quit cutting it right away on the car street side to filter some of the trash that's coming from down the street from the neighbors that having more garbage than what me and my other neighbors would have. And as of right now, I mean, garbage thrown everywhere. And for y'all saying once a week, that's incentive wage the city will be gaining because we pay for twice a week to have it here. Y'all took it down to three months, talking about this probationary period. How come y'all didn't give us the two-dollar incentive on our water? Or perhaps even put some restrooms down at the park down there this weekend, that Friday evening, when I went home, it was over three hundred people down there. And what you think they did when they had these available? Anybody have any idea?
Tell me what that had to do with your trash collection.
Hey, that's about the trash, but also that's my neighborhood. That's my resting place, as I said, and I would care for it to be proper. I don't mind the kids and stuff being down there, but how many people gonna call and complain about somebody urinating or they caught somebody behind the teeth taking the crap? You know? That's enough on that part. The other part is the code enforcement, which y'all say today on the agenda.
Are we talking about items on the agenda? Because if we talk about another item, there was another section of public comment that we dealt with those items. I understand your complaints, trust me. We've had the conversation about restrooms at Hank Brown Park forever. We've had conversations about code enforcement over and over again, and we continue to have conversations, and we're moving forward with some progress and solutions as it deals with that. But as it relates to this item on the agenda, which is what we're only able to listen to on this particular item, tell me what your issues are. You got a minute and five seconds to tell me.
The issue for is garbage?
Yes, sir.
I think y'all need to pick it up twice a week. Because everybody go to the store, and people come out with a bag, but if you don't need no bag, why take one and you gonna throw it in the street? Well, I mean, I think that is wrong when y'all come up with a three-month probationary period, and y'all got the incentive, we got nothing. That's enough on that part.
Appreciate it, thank you. Next up. Ms. Kitchen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Griffin.
Get your card.
Oops. Sorry, I failed.
I'm here for Kitchen's ten twenty-seven South Willow Street, Palatka, Florida. I don't see where I have an incentive to encourage this once-a-week garbage pickup. It's been said in the paper and at this commission meeting and by various staff that my bill's gonna be reduced. Well, in October, my garbage bill increased by twenty dollars. That's an increase like Mr. Jones said. You all are getting, I think in the previous meeting, you said that the city would save forty-seven thousand dollars. Well, that's great, but I'd like to save some money too. And my water bill, and my water and store bill just went up from about twenty-six dollars, well, twenty-three dollars. So I don't see where I've got a decrease. I'm getting less service and I've got an increase in my money. I think this is bad for Palatka. I think the majority of citizens are against it, even though probably, I understand, only twenty-nine or so answered the online poll or something, but regardless of that, I don't think it's a good idea for the city of Palatka. And I wish you all reconsidered and give us that for twice-a-week garbage pickup. Thank you very much.
You've served the commission for how many years before?
Nine years.
You know what happens during the budget process, when the budget, when it kicks in, it usually kicks in in October.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Okay, so we.
And nine years, I voted against the increase, didn't I?
And you know why you, you know why you got the increase, all right?
Well, exactly why, just me, I like it.
Okay.
And like the Dr. Carter flu shot, I didn't like it, but I knew why.
You did.
Yeah, it hurt her. Look, reach it.
And you know why the water line was down too?
Your water never down. That's the thing.
So, next up, somebody talk to me about something that didn't happen forty years ago. Thanks, sir. Mr. Lewis.
My name is Roosevelt Lewis. I live at four eleven South Fourteenth Street. I wanna talk about the garbage. My neighbor is putting garbage in my garbage. You know, I didn't know nothing about the, um...
You tell Mr. Andrews that.
Not that neighbor. He down on, he's on the corner. But anyway, I didn't know nothing about it, until my wife told me about it, that they was doing it once a week. But it's, it's really bad in my neighborhood. Trash is everywhere. So, I mean, I don't have much to say, but I wish they have, you know, can continue with it two times a week. All right, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, you got a card?
Yeah, I got a card.
Come on up, sir. You can fill it up before your lead's gonna come up to speak, man. Just tell me your name and address.
My name is Isaiah Hendrix, forty-five oh three Pontiac Street. Now, anybody know me, I have plenty of kids and plenty of grandchildren. So, when many grandchildren over, means more trash. I'm putting trash in my backyard, my dog's ripping it up. Put it out by the road, cats and dogs rip it up. It's a bad thing that we're going through here. And I'm what, how much more are we paying for another garbage can?
Sixty.
Why do I have to pay for it? Why do I have to pay for another garbage can when you can pick up two times a week? I can continue to use that one can I have. Thanks, sir. I fill it up.
You got, you got two twenty-three left.
Is the show, is it over? You talk for me. Mr. Preston?
What is your question?
You cover it up?
Forty-five oh three Pontiac.
You didn't fill it out. Who else has a speaker's card for me?
Well, I got one. I missed the first part because I'm late, because that's what I do.
You didn't miss it, you were right on point. Let me get your card.
So I didn't hear anything what y'all said.
Just give your name and address.
Caroline Sharp.
I need your card over Caroline.
Thank you.
Caroline Sharp, twelve oh seven North Seventeenth Street, two times a week. That's what we need. We need the garbage picked up two times a week. Because it's, my garbage be overflowing, and half the time, I don't even remember the day, to be honest. I'm used to the days of Monday and Thursday, and that's what I've always gotten picked up on Monday and Thursday. But now I'm gonna get picked up on Mondays, and I need my garbage picked up twice a week.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Preston?
All right, I'm gonna have it right. Don't look at me, man. Isaac Bryson, nine hundred Main Street. I'm speaking on the behalf of a lot of my family and friends. My mother stays on Washington Street, and you know, we got a big family. And it's amazing how, what, do you?
Family. Landfall and night.
Watch out, I'm in that family.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Um, um, what happens is that it's amazing how you put everybody on the same scale when they got bigger families. It's just like you get picking up the garbage for a person that got two people staying in the house one time a week, but you got nine people staying in the house, and you gonna put, give them the same rate, that's, that's, that's kinda, you know, you gonna deal with more garbage, more people, more garbage, just like Mr. Isaiah said, Hendrix, like he said, we just gotta, I, I think you ought to be a little bit more considerate with what's happening, because like you said, if you're gonna keep the city looking good like you, y'all normally did when y'all got in the office, how y'all came up and picked up the papers. It was amazing how I seen them picking up the paper over there by the junk, y'all, because I said, they need to be on the back of the garbage truck dumping them cans like they need to be done, instead of trying to do what they need, and a lot of times, people doing what they wanna do because they not out there. Mr. Ed knows they need to be dumped two, twice a week, because sometimes they're, I'm a commercial person, and sometimes they forget me. And I call them sometimes, and I'm paying for it, so let, let's just give the people what they, what they paying for. I mean, if you wanna keep the city looking great, you say you wanna looking good, let's give them twice a week, what's, what's gonna hurt? And then I, I talked to a lot of other guys, and they talking about time, everybody taking a cut, even paying cut, wow, when you need, you got a whole lot of work out there.
Who take a pay cut?
Well, well, hour cuts, well, let me say that. I, I just, I ain't the one, I know a lot more than I'm saying.
You know that. Huh?
We gave increase, we gave increase.
I mean, not, I mean, for hours.
That's incorrect.
Well, no, listen, listen to what I'm saying.
But go ahead, I don't want you to lose your point, go ahead.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that a lot of people, it was guys, they don't retire, now I can say this, they had to get off the clock, and it was one o'clock in the afternoon and they weren't finished with their rock. That's what I'm saying. Certain hours have been shaved down just because they trying to save money on the other end. That's what I mean, not saying not getting enough money, but they had to get shaved down. So if I gotta get off the clock at twelve-thirty, and there's only two people left on the back of the truck, so they either gonna put a strings on the other person who finished the rock, or you could just let them make a little bit more money, y'all say y'all getting the money, and let them clean up the city. Right?
My clock's still going. You got eighteen seconds?
No. But that's all I have to say.
Your card, did you find your card yet?
When y'all ain't give us no PIN, so I...
Here you go, sir. You can get my PIN.
It's actually a PIN sitting in there where the cards are. But it just passed. Mr. Andrews, I know you got a couple more things to say, you have thirty seconds left, you wanna finish it? Yeah, so let's what?
Yeah, I can do that.
I want you, now, I wanna make sure I have everybody, let everybody say what they gotta say, because people need to be heard, and I'm, and I don't know if you guys understand, I'm glad to see you here, because one of the things that we did, when we talked about this, we did a workshop, and people didn't show up for the workshop. It was, the information was put in, we had meetings, and it was put, and information was put inside the bill, but I'm glad to see people here because we don't know what you thinking if you don't tell us. And so, I asked some questions simply because I, I trying to get both sides out, but I need, but I'm glad to see y'all here. Give me a second, Mr. Andrews, go ahead.
Oh, another thing is, as far as the trash that people may have coming out the house, you might have a new mattress set or something come to your house, put a mattress out there, y'all add on another fee. I hear people talking about it, but I say, if I see it on mine, then I'm gonna go down there, I'm gonna mine themself. You know what I'm saying? Because it don't make sense. You paying fire assessment fees, and whether it's property taxes, and all the other taxes we paying, DMV and all that. I mean, I know y'all got plenty of money, man, y'all talk like you got the...
We'll be happy to sit down and go with you line by line.
Yeah.
Serious though, if I put some garbage or stuff, some trash out there side the road, according to how much it is, they tell me they gonna add, add it on my bill, well, I itemize mine, I don't nobody around there, but I go through, if I see a change, I'm gonna bring it to attention to somebody. But I don't think that's that.
But back to the money, we can all, you can come in and we can go over the budget if you like, we'd be happy to share that information. Show you, show you where the money coming from.
It's online, where everybody...
One other thing.
You got ten seconds on that, yeah.
Put that down across the highway right here, and up here on Nineteenth Street, and then people come to the meeting.
What, Mayor?
Y'all got your...
You gotta talk to P.O.T. about...
You put up Chris Florida, man.
We don't put banners across the state road seventeen. You gotta talk to P.O.T., Mr. Andrews.
I wanted to say, how can you run around the meeting? How can you run around the meeting?
It's posted, the meters are posted online, and it's always...
Yeah, second and fourth thirds of every month, except for a certain, you know, certain month, which is December, November, December.
Anybody, anybody else here, anybody else here speaking for public comment?
We, we're working on a meeting, we get you, we can give you.
Alright.
See, I didn't know, I didn't, somebody happened to tell me, and that's why I came.
Okay.
We'll get your list.
Yes.
Anybody else here for public comment at this point? Seeing nobody else, everybody's comments are to hurt. Jones, you got anything else?
Yes, sir. Survey?
You got, you got to come to the front row. You know, have you, you get your bill online, or you get?
No, sir, matter of fact, I have a bill right here.
Mr. Griffin, what was the bill, what was that survey sent?
Um, it went out on, and it may still be going out on some of the bills, but the proof that I saw had a link to the survey online as well as a QR code that you could take a picture of and direct you there.
And is it ready on your bill?
That is what billing period is this. Yep, that's it.
So...
Well, you have to put glasses on to actually see it.
What, what, what concerns me when I get these is the bottom line, how much it gonna cost me. I, I'm telling you, I had no idea, and I, I bought it with me, and you see this. So, and I'm quite sure...
But you gotta read it.
Well, I understand, well, however, it is the water quality notice that comes in and said, water's not, you know, top quality, but...
Hasn't been a top quality for a hundred and thirty years.
I know, so we not gonna go to that.
So, have a good day.
So, I'm not gonna go to that, however.
Mine is so nasty.
So, you finished?
In hard.
Are you finished?
No, I am, I am finished, I just want you guys to really consider the people and, you know, what we're saying here today, and I know the numbers are gonna probably show something different, I just want you guys to really consider customer service. Sometimes we have to put in numbers if we can, if we can stand it. Customer service should be...
Appreciate it. Again, thank you to everybody for coming in here and speaking. Unlike what we normally do, you get your three minutes, you go from there, but I wanna make sure that we heard from everybody. We heard from a group of constituents early on, we went through this process, we gone through the ninety days, and so I wanted to hear from everybody. Mr. Griffin, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Chandler, if y'all got anything that you wanna present, you go ahead. You've gotta hurt some of the concerns that were out there as well, and then we'll get to the commission.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I brought Mr. Chandler with me because, you know, he's head of operations for sanitation, and he lives it every day. And really, we don't have a flashy PowerPoint tonight, we do have some numbers, we just wanna have a conversation, see how everybody feels about it. We know how we feel about it, we see some positive things, some things we can build upon. I know if you've read the staff report, we did include some of the numbers, some of the metrics that we decided that we would judge this by in that staff report. A lot of our estimates regarding cost savings are holding. We did extrapolate the cost of the debt service, and it looks like year twenty twenty-five is the year where we would actually be able to start putting a capital outlay aside versus paying principal and interest towards the residential trucks. We didn't take into consideration commercial because this evaluation is residential only. It does save us money in future years. There is the possibility of reducing the monthly fee by a dollar right now, and obviously you could direct staff to do that, we'd have to bring it back to you at another call meeting and for a second reading. But again, do you have any questions of us, and I can answer some of the concerns that we heard, or...
Yeah, go ahead, start address some of those, and then, and then we'll have questions from the commission after that.
So, the biggest thing, and Ed, feel free to chime in at any time here, when we were doing this, we gained two weeks out of the, or two days out of the week, where we typically were going around and picking up, you know, two-thirds or even half of the cans because everybody had twice-a-week pickup, they only put their can out once a week. What we did those two days is we went to areas where historically sanitation wasn't able to do litter pickup, and it fell to streets when they had time to do it between all the other demands they have on their time. What we saw in some specific areas and a couple of the neighborhoods that were mentioned, a lot of that trash is not from overflowing cans, that's from litter. We don't historically get out there to get that on a weekly basis. We saw areas looking cleaner than they looked before, where we historically had litter problems, and we also saw areas that looked clean before that looked the same afterwards. Those are our observations, and I'm a kind of a reactionary guy. A lot of these comments, I wish you called me or Mr. Chandler the day you saw it. You know, if you were driving around and saw overflowing cans, I welcome the opportunity, so does Ed, to go and talk to those residents about why they are generating more waste than the average resident. Yes, some people got eight or nine people living in their house, and they're a candidate for two cans, but not everybody is. Questions?
Have questions, I have lots of comments. You got anything else? No more, no more. We're done, we're done.
You wanna say something?
No, I'm just glad to, Ed Chandler, City of Palatka, Solid Waste Superintendent, all I can say, what Mr. Griffin was saying just now is absolutely correct. I mean, I've been seeing a lot of changes since we implemented the once-a-week pickup. I mean, as far as what we've been trying to do, and, and I think another thing that some people may be missing also is a lot of people may not know that they're already paying for recycling, and, and that's been a pretty big issue to push to, because the recycling, when you're, recycling, whether it's plastic cans and other things of that nature, that, that, what we see in those garbage cans is a lot of that. You know, but, but I think a lot of people just don't understand that, but at the same time, and just like Mr. Griffin, I said, yes, we understand that people have, you know, you know, a lot of people in households and other things of that nature, we understand that, and that's why it was also put out about having that separate can, yeah, which is sixty dollars, but we implemented it at five dollars a month. We understand, you know, how everybody feels, you know, yeah, okay, that, that's other money that needs to be spent, but we're trying to do everything right for everybody. That's what we're trying to do. And I mean, from what I've been seeing going in on these ninety days is great improvement because it's almost like if you're not doing one thing right, something else is going wrong. So what we've implemented, like I said, in those other two days, what we've been doing in this entire city, is going out through areas that we've seen where there is, I mean, major litter problems all over, and that's where we've been focusing that, to make sure that everything is cleaned up along, focusing on the three-day pickup also. So, and like I said, I, I have always opened to any question that anybody has for me, and believe me, not only myself, but we will do what it takes, I mean, to make everything right for everyone. I mean, that, that's what I've always believed in, I've been here twenty-four years, and believe me, I've been through the, the ups and downs and, and everything else. But, but that's, that's my job, as a solid waste director, is to make things right, and that's what we're gonna try to do.
Some question, has there historically ever been a time where there, that the city does one day, a month, for one day a week pickup?
You won't answer that.
No, I, I...
You know, just as well as I do, it happens twice a year.
Yep, twice a year.
During Veterans Day, during Christmas, during Thanksgiving?
Yep.
Alright. So, question from the commission.[1682.62]
Okay, um, can I go?
Yes, sir.
Um, I was one that reached out to Mr. Griffith, um, a while back, and Mr. Chandler gave me calls. Um, I had concerns with regards to the north side, um, cause I personally written around and I saw some of the trash overflow even within my own neighborhood. I've seen where, um, we have overflow within my neighborhood. Um, and I'm one of the individuals, I'm not speaking on behalf of me because I can let my garbage go two weeks and I'll be good, it probably can go three weeks to a month. And I'm just, I'm good. So I'm speaking on conversations that I've had with citizens, not only, I'm talking about from both sides of the track. Um, my concern is, you said, don't understand leaving an education where a person doesn't understand how to teach them. And I don't think there has been anything within that ninety days that was implemented to go into those communities to actually teach those individuals how to preserve or how to recycle. We heard it from the beginning, but I personally have not seen any of that done. Had I, did I talk to people? Yes, so that's how I'm making it known that none of those things were done. Also, with the trash pickup, one of the problems that I see again is, Mr. Jones hit it right on the head. Well, I, let's go to the numbers that I see within this package. Twenty-nine people does not reflect a city of eleven thousand people. So what I see in here isn't doing me any good, simply because even with my bill, mine comes online. I don't go online and I don't print. So I did not see the survey, and I sit on the commission. So that's the problem in itself. What other methods did we utilize to make sure that this information was getting out to the seniors? My mom, my good dad, all of these individuals, they don't know how to scan a QR code, they don't know how to go to a website, they don't even know how to do those kinda things. So what are we truly doing to gather the information of our citizens? Again, I'm grateful to see these individuals that are here, but my phone has been going off the hook. Apparently, I mean, I didn't even know about the meeting. Now, first thing, I questioned when we came in is how did this lie, why was this not on the previous agenda? Why was this on today? Because I came with the assumption that we were only gonna be talking about the audit committee. So I personally don't feel like a decision should be made tonight, and I feel that we need to do what we say we were gonna do and go into these communities, various communities have various platforms that will teach. Because again, if a person doesn't understand, as an educator, I will not let my student fail because they, they didn't understand. Can the, can it work? It maybe can, but I don't feel like we have enough true data to make the decision to say that this once-a-week pickup is gonna suffice for the city of Palaka. Because what I see, it's not working as of now. Can it work? Again, so I'm not saying that I'm completely against it, but at this point, I don't see that we've done what we said we were gonna do from the beginning.
Question more?
Well, I echo that same sentiment. I mean, what we're looking at, we're looking at a really, really short timeframe. I mean, we gave it a, a trial period. Um, in my opinion, if we keep pushing this thing out, I, I don't know how much worse it's gonna get because this is a reflection of what is happening in the community. Uh, so I, I know what you guys are saying, but it's, it's not in the best interest of the city to keep pushing forward with a one-day-a-week pickup. Uh, it sounds good, but it sounds really good by the numbers, but at the same time, the end result, what is, what is the taxpayers getting for, for their dollar? Again, they are, they are getting increases, those increases, and where additional, they happen to go out and, and purchase additional cans, which is increasing more for lesser services. And then my understanding is a lot more trash on the ground. I have, I too have, uh, scoured through the city, and I have seen more trash cans overflowing and trash on, on the ground or whatever. I mean, I've been on the north side, south, south historic, um, and I, and I made a call on one instance or whatever, but I think we really need, I think we might be pushing too fast to try to approve this one-day-a-week, week pickup. Unless there's some, again, the educational side to where the recycling is put in place and all these other things. Uh, if I had to vote on this tonight, I'd have to say no on the one-day pickup. I, you know, I don't even know if we need to continue the one-day pickup. I think we probably might need to revert back to the two-day, but that's just a, a, um, a thing that the commission is gonna have to vote on. Um, so in my opinion, this is a reflection of what we're getting from the community. Uh, I think we might be pushing it too fast. It's a good, great idea from a number standpoint, but reality is saying that we're, we might not be getting it right. And, uh, again, this is a trial, and we certainly appreciate all of the feedback from the community, and this is what we've been asking for all along. I wish I'd have known a lot earlier from, uh, the group that's here tonight. I mean, you guys can reach out to us at any time. I mean, uh, so, but that's, that's what I have right now.
Commissioner more?
Go ahead. Um, and also, another thing that I was talking about, um, in my conversations was, even when we're talking about the north side community, um, with the trash cans. I even proposed moving from trash cans to going to dumpsters, simply, simply, if we were to do the once-a-week pickup, that would eliminate some of the trash in which we see on the side of the roads. And I find it very hard to believe. Again, I ride around all day, you know, I work, but I do ride around because I'm bouncing from school to school.
Way done.
I bounce from school to school, but I, again, on no side of town, north side, south side, no side of town have I seen any beautification when it came down to the once-a-week pickup. But again, even, I promise you, when I'm talking about trash, I've called several times with regards to trash on the road. Even me, I've come home to having trash put in my trash can, not that I have a problem with just gonna keep it off the ground.
Mr. Hendry.
Not if it's gonna keep it off the ground, but even just, again, like, even in those communities where instead of buying another garbage can, why can't that money go towards putting a dumpster out there? Like, have we really, have we did those kinda numbers? Have we looked into that? Have we had conversations with Palaka Housing Authority, talking about what can we do to come into your community? What can, what options do we have to get educational components? Because I do believe education is built into the public housing or should be. But what are we truly doing to get those residents ready for this once-a-week? As of now, it doesn't work. I mean, for me, again, it doesn't work because, again, we have not done what we say we were supposed to do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, yeah, my thing is we're supposed to be taking care of people, and the once-a-week pickup, to me, does not seem like it was working. Uh, I told y'all when we brought it up, that I was gonna stop going to grocery store and stop shopping because going into the grocery store and those other places, I get stopped just for folks to talk to me generally. When we have stuff like this, it means that I spend an extra hour in there because somebody is wanting to complain about what we're doing. We, um, one time talked about consolidating and letting the county go in, and I know we're talking about stuff forty years ago, but you gotta put up with some of my dollars, so that's why I'm here. Um, we looked at the county picking up once a, once a week, and they wanted to come in and take over all the city's, uh, garbage. And when the, the commission looked at it, we found out that we were more effective picking up our garbage, and it cost us less to do it than it, it did doing it. Uh, and we did it twice a week. It, we kept those guys working and kept their jobs, and it helped keep the mentality, be, keep morale and everything up. I'm too, um, look around, and I do see trash still sitting on the side road, and it's not cause the guys don't do it, they're pretty efficient. I watch them, and I stop and look at them and talk to them. So, me too, I, with me, my water bill, I pay it sometimes, sometime my son paid, and I'm like them. I look at how much it is, and a lot of that stuff that comes, I don't have time to read. And if y'all talk about all this stuff on computers, this senior citizen can tell you, all them senior citizens that get those bills, they not worried about what we can do with this telephone or with that computer. Cause some of them got flip phones and they just use it just for what they need, to talk to somebody and the cutoff. So, right now, I, I think that we need more information and more time on how to be more effective if we decide to change. But right now, I think this is a good time for changing.
Just as Commissioner Campbell, I too live alone. Um, and I can go through three weeks or a month without my trash being picked up, but it's not about me, it's about the citizens that put me in the seat. And the concerns that I've been hearing, it are the concerns of being, you know, trash being picked up once a week. Um, I've ridden around, just received some pictures while we're sitting here in this meeting of how the community is looking with the overflowing trash, and it doesn't look good. So I don't wanna just, uh, repeat everything that's been said. I do share the same sentiment that everyone else up here has been saying. And tonight, I couldn't move forward if we decided to, to, um, go forward with just picking up once a week.
Alright, so just to address a couple of the questions that were out there. The reason it's on your agenda tonight is because on September thirtieth, we adopted this. Uh, when you gave them a ninety-day trial, we won't have another meeting before the ninety days is expired. That's one of the reasons you have it on your agenda tonight. So I think it was missed for the last meeting, and it was, they wanted to get it in December.
I was not at town, sir, and I didn't think it was wise to put it on the agenda, but I could be president.
But I know that it was on here because the time was running out for the ninety-day trial. Um, secondly, one of the resonant things that I hear outside of everything else from people in the community, um, and I'm glad, first, I'm glad that everybody showed up. Because I get tired of sitting here with nobody in seats, and we make decisions, and then it's kinda like being the office coordinator last night. Everybody's questioning what call you make, but ain't nobody at the game, and nobody comes to practice. So I'm glad to see everybody here. And I, and, and the one thing about our meetings and the reason that we try to make it kind of a lighter mood is because we don't want people to think that it's any way intimidating to come forward in these meetings. Because more than anything else, the five people that sit up here, and even the staff, we welcome those comments. That's the reason that survey was put out there is so that people would respond. Now, based on what we're hearing from the information like Ms. Sharp and other people, is there an easier way to get it out there? Maybe so. Maybe the answer is to get the officers to go door-to-door and drop it off on the, or whatever. It may be another opportunity to put it out there, but I think getting that information is there. Nonetheless, even with your responses coupled with the twenty-nine before, you still only got roughly forty people who really actually said something in this form. Which, when we're making decisions, it's hard to make a decision when you got forty out of eleven thousand coming in. And so on staff's side, you got people who are truly trying to save money for the purposes of saving you money in the future. To go back to what Mr. Andrew said, hell, we inherited the city with infrastructure issues and budget issues and all this other stuff. The water was orange, the lines were a hundred and thirty years old, the streets were tore up, and what we've done is we've gone through, went over the city and put stuff in place. Um, new water lines, new roads coming, all these different things out there, millions of dollars going on Fourteenth Street, going all the way down the city, and we're trying to take a bite of this elephant one at a time. So we've dropped in more in infrastructure in the last four years than I think most people probably have in the last forty. And we're doing that because we're trying to fix something that was broken. That's just the reality. And we're doing it with, you hear people talk about, you know, champagne taste and beer budget. We had water budget. We didn't have any of that. You know, we, we were on the verge of bankruptcy as a city, and we've been able to be responsible enough to create some resources which allow us to be able to fix some of this stuff. And along the way, when staff came through with the recommendations to do once-a-week pickup, I was like, we gotta trust y'all, to let you at least try it for ninety days, let's see how it works. So we've tried it for ninety days, and what we realized is there's more information that's needed within that time period. The one thing that I'm, the one thing that I personally have concerns with is not necessarily the one-day-a-week pickup, but for the people who need additional garbage cans or receptacles. The fact that our change in policy creates an increase in money for them. And so if we're causing them to need a second can, then we should charge them for second can. That's one of the things that I see that's out there, uh, because it's an inconvenience. Um, but the other side of it is, the numbers that he presents on what the ultimate savings are on the lifespans of the trash, uh, of the trash trucks and all those other things, they're real numbers. And just like the concerns that you expressed are real concerns. Now, the question is, is there a middle ground? And so when we originally proposed this and we said we're gonna try to go to the dollar a month reduction, one of the first comments I had was, can we see if there's more? And so the question is, based on the information that you have in place, because I, I think it was Mr. Hendry or someone else, and, and it's been said by maybe five people. You're charging us more money, but you're not giving us any reduction. And so I don't, I don't necessarily think that, you know, the obligation of cities to pick up the trash. How many times you pick it up is a luxury based upon what's in place, and there has to be something that distinguishes the city from the county. But I also think that if they were getting a real reduction, then there would be a real conversation. And so, um, I think that there's an opportunity to take the information that we have, uh, the concerns that came before us today, the concerns that we hear in the grocery store, any other place. And actually come up with a better solution, because I, I don't think as many people would be complaining if they were getting some discount. You know, at the end of the day, I don't think they would be complaining in the same way, and a dollar a month is really not knocking a dent in where we are. So, you know, when you, when somebody says, I just got a three-dollar increase, when Miss Kitchen says, I got a three-dollar increase based upon your increase in your budget year. But we only gave you a dollar decrease in what we did for the services, and I understand that what we're doing, and so you gotta understand why you get increases on an annual basis, and this is just a teaching moment. It's because the rates have been low for so long. When they do rate studies, what they found is that Palaka's rates are way below everybody else in the area. We've been undercharging people for the longest on all this stuff, and what happens is you can't even support your services. You know, when people go back and they look at sanitation services and what it generates on a regular basis in most communities. I just had somebody bring this up to me the other day, who came in here and looked at our budget. Our sanitation is kinda set up where it's a break-even, it's a break-even sanitation cost. They do, they set the cost low so that it didn't impact citizens in the same way. The problem with that is, it doesn't allow for you to be able to do capital improvements or do improvements within the community based upon the fact that you're not generating the revenue you're supposed to generate in order to get those things done. Now, there's a trade-off, because you have to be to a point where you're able to be able to generate enough money so that you could pay your staff. Because we lose staff constantly, even though we've given raises up, you know, we've taken hourly wages up from nine dollars and something to fourteen. But at the same time, we still lose people because other communities are paying seventeen and eighteen, and so we'll train them and they'll go somewhere else. And so there's a cost associated with those type things, so there's a trade-off. But what we gotta do, and I, and I think the real answer is to look at this even more, to see where are the areas that we can tweak it that are gonna be best for the citizens. Commissioner Campbell gives a good point. We're seeing an increase in recycling costs. So what we found, in, in, not recycling costs, but in the people that recycle, just by showing hands, how many people are here recycling? I don't really do it, and, and I think part of, and part of it is, I think part of the reason that we don't recycle, because most people don't really consciously think about it and think about what the benefits are. So we had some folks come into one of our previous meetings and talk about, once they started recycling, they realized how much stuff that they're putting in their trash can that could be recycled that could be of a benefit. So a lot of times, if our recycling costs, if our recycling goes up, then our cost for garbage goes down at the landfill. When that happens, we pass the savings on to the citizen. But that has, that's an education piece that needs to be out there, which means that we can possibly do a better job of getting information out. And it's not because these guys didn't do it, but it's because we don't have the public information person in place historically to get that information out, to put out the press release or the public service announcement, which says recycling can save you money. Or there's a incentive for you recycling. And so just from this conversation and from the conversations that have come up before, I think that with the trial run, there may be some opportunities to do more. I don't necessarily think eighty-six in the trial run is the answer. I think the answer is in gaining additional information and seeing if there's a way to pass on some of these cost savings to the citizens. And if you can do that, and also figuring out a way that if people who need additional cans can get those cans, what, what's it gonna do long-term? And so I think ultimately, the commission has to make a decision on whether we try to get additional information. Is there additional time needed to kinda go through these things to work the buzz out, or do we go back to what we're doing before? And the downside of that is, you gonna take them off the street for two days while they're trying to clean their neighborhoods. And so, yeah, we going out and we clean up two hundred thou- thousand pounds of trash due Palaka pride, and we still do it. And so election or no election, it gets done, only because we care, we don't have to pick up trash as a commission. And no other commission is picking up trash, but we did it. And so we'll continue to do the stuff that we do over and beyond what anybody else has ever done. We'll continue to sit down and listen, we'll continue to do all those things, but I think ultimately, decisions have to be made, and those decisions have to be made with enough information to move forward. I think the citizens need more information as it relates to what options they have available for recycling, how they recycle cans, how they get all those different things. Uh, also how they get extra cans, and we may even wanna rethink how we provide the additional cans. How many people actually ask for additional cans?
It's hard to gauge how many calls being made, because the calls transitioned into talking about the recycling opportunity, you're already paying for it. Tell us about why you think you need a can, how many people are living with you? I mean, I'd have to talk to Glenda and Ashlyn to really see. All I can tell you is that we had the fifteen ordered.
Yeah, so, and that was the day, under the number was fourteen the last time I checked, about a week ago.
Are those calls recorded? Are there, is there anything that we can say?
To track the calls.
Right.
So I got a digital phone system.
But no, but again, it brings up, it brings up a concern because if calls have been coming in and we're able to gauge those kinda things, like, that show, that gives us a better number. You say, let me go talk to Glenda, it could be one call, you know, outside of that's, and it's, and it's, again, not to bring you all saying that things have not been done, but those are concerns. If we're truly looking at data, that's a part of the data that needs to be included. Like, we received this many calls, this was the resolution to those calls. So if we knew that ten people called in, Glenda had ten conversations about the recycling, and we knew that five people changed their mind and went to recycling, those are numbers, those are things how we track. Um, the true data, what I'm seeing right now is not true data.
Any other comments?
I got a motion.
Hold on. Go ahead.
Well, no, I mean, I, I think enough said from my perspective as it relates, I, I, I think we need to probably give it a little bit more, uh, of a chance to, um, work. If we can provide cans, if we can make sure that the trash are picked up. work if we can provide cans, if we can make sure that the trash are picked up and...
Sir, sir.
Just, just...
Please don't yell out in the bathroom room.
I, my, in my opinion, I, I don't think 90 days was low enough in order to be able to do this thing right. Uh, the staff, they went out and they tried to be innovative as it relates to trying to provide a service. Again, on the other, on the flip side, it impacted some of the community. Where can we, uh, find a happy medium in terms of what would it take to appease the community that's been impacted in that way? Do you think two times a week will, will, will fix the problem, or will it just? Well, I'm saying, will it fix the, fix the problem?
Even if they pick it up two times a week?
If we can, I, I'm letting everybody, I'm letting everybody talk, but don't yell out like we're at a football game.
But that's my question. If two, because even with two times a week, there were still issues. So, I think collecting the information, working with the staff in, in the community, I think we, 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 I, I don't want to pull the plug on it really, I mean, too fast. I mean, we, we've been through this process for 90 days. Are y'all willing to work with, with the staff in order to, to do that? No?
I think the focus is too heavy on, like we may have said earlier, two days a week. If we are not, still not providing the education that they need, that's the issue. And that's one of the things that the superintendent identified, but it's a lack of education.
Well, it's, it's, go ahead, go ahead.
I think what, for my motion, if I can, I would like to make a motion that this item be tabled indefinitely until we receive, um, a plan or at least a tentative schedule of not only, um, that we receive a tentative schedule as to ways that we are going to get the communities engaged. Um, and I'm not talking about them coming to us, we're going to them. And I'll be, and I'm saying we're, because I would like to be a part of those conversations so that we can truly gauge that the information that is coming back to us is something that we're all hearing. And if we all have the opportunity to go out with you all, I think it approves to our citizens that we truly want to hear from them for what their concerns are. Um, so that, as well as, I will make the motion that we remain at one day a week, extending it. And this is why I'm asking that we remain. Because if you change going back to something, you can't truly educate them in the process. So, again, I ask that we extend at least for the month of January, so that did the, so that sanitation can come up with a whole plan. And then, if it doesn't work, if, or the educational components doesn't work, then re, re-riz it. But again, we have to have, we have to provide education while something is going on. We can't revert, because what would happen is, if we go back to two days a week, and then we see that it could be one day a week, y'all really gonna be mad at us. So, again, I would like to extend, and then we come back for consideration. Because I don't want to have too much movement, and then it really be just crazy.
So, part of your motion, you're saying?
Education.
Tabled indefinitely?
Well, indefinitely until, well, take this back, to, to January 23rd.
Okay.
Okay.
Education components need to be, uh, we need to know what the process is to engage our citizens within, you know, the talk of two-day options, as Mayor Hill said, uh, the options that they have with regards to the, um, whatever options there are. And then come back to the commission, and then we make a decision.
With weekly feedback?
Yes. Via email, via however you all get it to us. But again, I want to be able to go out into the, to the community, um, and have these conversations with you all. But again, we cannot resort back and switch back to two days a week and then put the education component in there. And then, if we come back to the commission, if we decide, yeah, one day is gonna work, then go back to one day. That's just crazy.
Without happening any intervention?
So, what do y'all do this 90 days?
That's what I'm saying. So, that's what made my point. We failed. And if you heard me say it, we failed because we did not say, we did not do what it was that we said we're gonna do. So, in order for us to make that means, um, we're, that's what we calling a compromise. We're trying to get it back out there. We're asking for an extension.
Are you gonna put a hole down those people?
No, this is the motion, this is the motion.
Can you read that motion, Bill?
I'm gonna repeat what I have. Mr. Campbell moved to table the resolution until such time the commission receives a tentative schedule on how they will engage the community in education and solutions. Extend the once-per-week pickup through January 2020 to allow public works to come up with a plan for education and options, and to receive weekly feedback on progress.
I think both are extended to January 23rd.
23rd, yeah, put a date on that.
Second. 27th, I think is the meeting.
23rd is the meeting.
Oh, okay. You're right.
I second it.
My motion is already seconded by the commission, my house.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, I would just like to say about the fees, that what I'm seeing, looking at the budget and looking at your finances, is we're really far behind in that at a certain point, um, there were not any increases. We stayed stable with our revenues, um, and our fees. And so, after so many years, your expenditures, your cost to pay these people, to pay their health benefits, to, um, your operating expenses increase every year. The cost of vehicles increase every year. It's just a natural occurrence that we would like to get to a point to where you're not seeing as large of an increase every year. Not your own pace with a CPI instead of having this here. We are continuously, since I've been here, climbing to try to make sure that we at least match. And like the mayor said, we are just barely making things even. There's no room there for error in what we're operating. We do, or we have in the past, provided twice a week service. If you look, your surrounding cities, counties, we have done some research as well and called around. They do once a week. We are $6 behind two of those cities that are right beside us. One with lower population, one with higher population. Um, and so, and they are providing once a week. Ocala is one of them. Um, so, I just wanted to make sure that you understand that I know that for the city, the regular for the city is that you feel as if you're getting less of a service. But in reality, you are getting more of a service for the monies that you are paying than anywhere else. We just aren't on pace with them. We're not there yet.
Alright. No, we're, we're, it's on commission now. We won't, there are no more comments from the public. We're on the commission. Um, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
Question.
The only thing I got before we have a question is that we need to, just for, for this next 30 days, suspend the $5 additional cost on trash, on trash cans. That's the only thing I would ask us to do.
That's what I was gonna ask, so we're gonna make people still pay that?
For the next 30 days, if people want to do some trash can, let's suspend the cost. Yes, sir.
So, we're saying suspend the whole cost, not just the $5 that month, but the whole $60?
No, no, no. The $5, it's only for 30 days. It's $5 per person. Yeah, right now, you got 14 people.
Again, forgive me, I don't want to get into the weeds. I just want to give you a hypothetical situation. That cost usually is a deterrent factor for those individuals that don't necessarily need the can. If you take all of our customers times the $60 that it cost to buy the can, because we're not making a profit on it, that's a budget cut.
Yeah, it's, it's for 30 days, though.
Okay.
And it's, but it's not a part of the motion. So, just go ahead and just vote on what we got.
We can make that a part of, I'm in my motion to add that to it.
Okay. Is that good for a second?
Second.
Alright. Any further discussion on this motion?
Question.
Question, on the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries to the House. Uh, did you end the business before the commission? Seeing none, any closing comments on the commission?
No, I mean, I just, I'm just happy that the community came out and engaged. Uh, and we look forward to continue to work with the community in order to come to a happy medium and understand what, what is it and how we can meet, better meet their needs or whatever, as well as, um, uh, support our staff as well, so.
I'd like, I'd like to say one thing. I would like the, um, community to understand that things are changing. If you look at how many streets are being torn up, they just not being torn up, will be torn up. We're trying to get more water and sewer lines in so people get better service and better water. And I know that you all don't realize how much is being done sometimes, but as you ride along the city, you can see that work has been done. We went to the, uh, we went to, to try to make the change in showing and working with the county, uh, the state road department. When they did the water, I mean, when they did the drainage on, on Highway 920, 9th Street, where I live, it was a mess for a while. But the city went in and got money and borrowed money to put in there so the water and sewer lines are new lines going in. They done it out on the heights, and they done it over on the, the north side. Sometimes you don't realize that what we see wrong, we're trying to work at getting it done. It just costs a lot of money to get it done. And most of the work that's being done is being done with grants and things that our staff has worked overtime to find. So, as you look at what you feel might is not being done, put a little something in there of what is being done, uh, and look at it.
Anybody else? Um, I think, I think tonight's been interesting, because we've been begging for people to come forward. And, um, it's good that we finally got to hear some different voices and a different perspective with different impacts, and it didn't go deaf ears. Um, I wouldn't say that this trial period is a failure at all. I think it did exactly what it was meant to do, which is raise the consciousness of citizens, raise the consciousness of staff, and try to find solutions to a problem that's haunted us for the longest, which is, how do we accurately charge? How do we provide the services without it being of a detriment to anybody, without it breaking the citizens, but also without it breaking the city? And the reality is, we've been, we left our rates low for so long that it crippled us. And the impact is being felt, being felt today as opposed to over a 40-year period where it would have been a softer blow. Um, the reality is, we're doing the job more efficiently from a sanitation standpoint. The, the job is done more efficiently. I think the, the morale of the workers is totally different. And the city, while most people don't agree, the city is cleaner than it was a few years back when you ran around and everything was there. Is it, is it perfect? No, not by any stretch of imagination. Can't it be better yet? But it's getting better. And right now, the roads are torn up because people are fixing them. You know, progress is taking place all over this, this city. And it's frustrating to the average citizen who believes that their costs are down. And one thing that separates us from the county, I sit on solid waste disposal committee for the county, is the fact that we do two, two, two-day, two, two times a day pickup. But we also did once a week payroll for the longest, and it was of a detriment to us. Times are changing. It's not the same commission. It's not the same city. It's not the same people. The city's gonna continually grow, which means there's gonna be relief given to people. Dirt exchanging, properties exchanging. You're gonna see tax revenues continually increased. They've been averaging about 7% per year, 9% the last year. As those things happen, then you're gonna see the burden of the blow not be on residential clients like it's been. Our residents have been carrying the weight for a long period of time. And finally, we're getting some growth in the community and some efficiency, so it can be taken off of it. Everybody complains about fire assessment, but nobody realizes that your maintenance rate went down. So, while you complain on one end, only because you didn't come in and listen to what was being said, you don't realize that you're getting a reduction in your taxes. But you raise hell because you get a reduction in taxes. At the end of the day, Pelacca's gonna continue to prosper. We're gonna continue to listen to our citizens and listen to our staff. And we're gonna find a way that is good for everybody. Everybody's not gonna like it, but at the end of the day, it's gonna be a better Pelacca. They didn't like it. Everybody's gonna like the idea that your water's no longer orange, but you didn't like the idea that we use fire assessment as a, as one of the tools. But when you turn, when you don't have to replace your filters so often, you're gonna like it even more. So, as we finish on, um, I'm just at a point where I'm just glad that there's progress. I'm glad that citizens are engaged, and we're gonna spend another 30 days to try to get it right. And that's what's gonna happen. On another note, this commission needs to be aware, and I've recommended that we have a workshop together on the 9th of, um, January, because the, the housing authority is about to enter into a decision, I think, that could impact us all. And we need to be engaged in it, and our citizens need to know about it as well. Like, how is authorities looking to possibly raise all of its units, or at least half of its units? Raise, I mean, tear down and rebuild units in different areas, and increase by 283 units. It's could be, it could be almost $50 million project. And they were set to take a vote on that recently, and their commission decided to pass that vote. So, we need to all be engaged at how that's gonna happen in this community, uh, as we talk about affordable housing, workforce housing, public housing, all these different conversations. Because it, because it has an effect on all of us. You know, every homeowner, every property owner, every citizen, it has an effect. And we need to be a part of the conversation saying, hey, your agency is one of the most important agencies we have in this city, in this county, and you have the ability to change lives. Many of us grew up in public housing, and we know what it did for us from a character standpoint, but we also know what it felt like to be in, in apartments that were, that was home in a community. And we just need to be engaged and make sure that we don't miss out on those conversations. Just like we're here today, talking about trash collection. We need to be there talking about the future of housing in this community and how it's gonna impact us and even our home values, because it could be a great benefit if everybody has their voice heard. And so, that's something that I want us to look forward to. Uh, there's a recommendation for a January 9th meeting, but call the housing authority, find out when they have that meeting scheduled for, because I think the community needs to be involved in that conversation. I think, you know, everybody needs to be involved, because it could be something that changes the lives of people forever. And so, that's one of the things that we have out there. We've had investors coming from all over the country, coming into this place and looking at opportunities to invest in Pelacca. And so, as we do those things, we need to make sure that we're on solid footing and that our community's clean and we're ready to move forward. So, that's my comments for today.
That January 9th, is it?
I'm, I'm trying to reach out to them and see if we can get a workshop on January 9th, so we can sit down with them and talk about the master plan.
Okay.
Um, I'll reach out to Dr. Woods and see what we can get in place. But I, I think that the city commission should be a part of that, of that conversation. Uh, nothing else is in order, adjourned from the comments. We'll adjourn.